Ma'atata, ma'anu'tu, ma'otu'tu, tia'tata, teta'ma'e, i'akata'apu'tu, tukanihe'raho, tukutu'tu'me'kare, kakamira. It's a great pleasure for us to be here to welcome the council on their first inaugural meeting. I'll just outline the order of process. I am going to provide a karakere using our traditional words and thoughts to bless your term and have you hope a smooth sailing through to the completion of your term, followed by me'ipakata'apu, anu'upoku'apu'tu'raiki'ru'n'a, David Allison, followed by wa'ata'apu'ma'anu'ti'oreore, aki'ora'tata, kato'akara. Tia'ta'ia tahi'arapu, tipe'taraku'iruka'ma'e, to'tomaa'e waho, tafari'ke'aparapu, ha'wahakari'ko', ko'ra'iki'uehu, ka'turu'turu'taraki'iruka'ma'e, i'ma'ma'e, na'awae'oke'tu'ke'da'akare'ade, koe'ade, tama'e. Ma'wakapaka, haranu'tu'moana, ka'tere'ete'rohi'rohi, Ka'tahu'te'iwi, a'arakini, tumuana, wakoi'iti, tia'awa, fakadra'iki, tumu'rai, o'tapoti, tukana. I'ma'iyana'ha'oke'akoto', i'ten'ora. Nomi'a, haranui', niki'ula. Kinga'araka'teru', o'takana'i'ru'ol'otapoti, nomi'a. Te'ana'apun'tu, kato'akara. On behalf of the people of Dunedin and also being the keepers traditionally of a target of roads into Monica, New South, back down to the coast. But more importantly, in this one we're saying it ours, thank you very much for inviting us to this great ceremonial occasion, being in the square in of very good and all you wonderful people. And from the people of Dunedin, including Whackwaka'akau'and Tsur'amaru, I would say thank you very much for putting your names forward to become part of the great canoe which will hopefully take us through to the next future. N'uray'ari'ho'na, te'ana'akoto', te'ana'akoto', te'ana'tata, kato'akara. Manu'chiriya, manu'chiriya, manu'wariya, e'ree'ka'tu'mai'teru'hi, etu'e koe'ia. Koe'ia, koe'ia, kotarariki'ki'ma'e, e'erka'e koe'ia, koe'ia.
Te'ana'akoto', kato'akara, e'hu'i'i, maina'i. Kotuma'e mau'ana'ite'mana'fenewa'o'tupou'ine. Te'ana'ra'ua kotu'mo'anga'emihi. Ko'ra'tarifaria'mato', etau'kaunu'hiera', etahapurine ki'te'fakarato'ia'akato'. I'teka'ana'kiya'mihaya'e kautu, i'akiya'fakahokia'anga'mihi. E'te' tumu'aki? Akumihikiya'kautu makoa'fakarato'ke'kona', konai. To all those gathered here, greetings. To the mana'fenewa representatives of the community of Odi'pou'iti Dunedin, thank you for your welcome. I and my councillor-elect colleagues are chosen to serve here by the Dunedin community. It's appropriate to be welcomed by them and acknowledge that in return. To the chief executive and staff, greetings. To my councillor-colleagues, greetings and welcome. To those who have served this place and have passed on or moved on, salutations and thank you. May our work together be fruitful.
Your worship, I'd like to welcome you to the inaugural meeting of the Dunedin City Council for the 2013-2016 triennial. As chief executive of the council, I'm delighted to now undertake the installation of the mayor of Dunedin. Your worship, you've been elected as mayor of the city of Dunedin and it's now my privilege to invest you with the insignia of your office. I now first call attention to the meaning of the word 'mayor'. It is simply the anglicised form of the Latin word 'major', meaning 'great'. You may therefore consider yourself as the city's first citizen elected by the people of Dunedin. The office of mayor is widely regarded as the highest honour which a city can bestow on one of its citizens. The office carries with it the requirement to watch over, advocate and look after all the people of Dunedin, not just sectoral interests. In Dunedin, an essential part of the mayoral tradition is the wearing of robes of office and the use of regalia. The robes are not intended to glorify the individual, rather they are a uniform of office to be worn in respect and honour of the people whom you serve. The wearing of the robes and chain of office play an effective part in ensuring that the functions of office, both business and ceremonial, are conducted with dignity, credit to the council and honour to the community. The robe with which I will shortly invest you is therefore the outward and visible sign of the distinction, favour and authority which Dunedin citizens have conferred upon you by electing you as their mayor. Chain and medallion which I place upon your shoulders has two-fold significance. Not only is it a mark of distinction and favour like a robe, but it is a symbol of service to the people. The chain then is to remind you that you are also a servant of the people and it will be your duty at all times to serve them to the utmost of your power and ability. The chain is made of gold. There is nothing mean in its composition and precious metals must be guarded with care. In order that you are to guard and defend the trust and confidence which your fellow citizens have placed in you. The Dunedin City mayoral chain which portrays the city Christ in gold and enamel was a gift from the Dunedin Chamber of Commerce in 1909 and the links were purchased by or on behalf of most of the previous mayors and are so inscribed. Each subsequent mayor to the present time has donated a link. The hat which I now place before you is so made that it points both ways, forward and backward. This is to remind you that while you look forward to the future, you are also profit from the experience which comes from looking back to the past. The white gloves which are placed in your hand signify the cleanliness of democracy. It will be your duty to preserve the traditions of your office and to uphold with dignity the good name and reputation of Dunedin City and when your term of office expires, to hand over to your successor the affairs of the city in unsullied condition and I invite you to take your declaration of office. I now formally install you into the chair as mayor of this city and wish you a very happy and successful term of office. It's now my privilege to take declarations of each of the councillors-elect and I shall just move around the room in alphabetical order.
I, David Henry, bid some hope here that I will faithfully and impartially, according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue, virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, John Clissin, present you clear that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Canary Jane Cowagre, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, David Swayne Moore, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin. The powers, authority and duty vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Darren Hawkins, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Michael Lizzy Law, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2003, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Agent Martha Beattavish, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Andrew Barry, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Member David S. P., declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Richard John Thompson, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Lee Vanis, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Andrew Peter Wally, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Captain Mary Higgit Wilson, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
I, Christopher John Staines, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skills and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
Now, it's clearly out of order. I can't attend. For the sake of propriety, I think I should read my declarations well. I, David Charles Cull, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 or any other act.
Dear Tata, ademi, nomi, fak tomi, welcome and good afternoon to you all. It is a privilege for me to be again chosen to serve as mayor of our city. It is also a privilege to welcome my colleagues, the new council, to this inaugural meeting and to this council training. Each term of council is at once a new start with a new mandate from our community and at the same time a continuation of effort inherited from previous terms and previous councils. That continuity of effort is refreshed and enhanced by new ideas and renewed energy from newly elected councillors. And I am pleased and delighted that the community has elected a council replete with a positive combination of experience, talent and energy. It bodes well for this term. A number of strategies and policies were initiated and developed during the previous term that reflect, among other things, councils' statutory responsibilities to plan for the future of our community. And these cover areas such as finance, infrastructure and spatial planning. They are expressed in plans like our economic development, social wellbeing and financial strategies, the city cycle plan and the next generation district plan. It will be a priority for those to be progressed and/or implemented over this term. Additionally, Dunedin shares with communities the world over the need to plan for the effects of climate change, energy depletion and sea level rise. I have established and appointed committees to most effectively achieve all of those objectives. In addition, I have appointed chairs and deputies to those committees where possible in line with the stated interests and concerns of councillors, both returning and newly elected. That will enable, excuse me, the maximum contribution from elected members to the development of sound policy and the implementation of strategies. I also look forward to the inclusion and development of new ideas and fresh perspectives, so important from and for a newly elected council. I believe this will be an exciting and constructive term. Enhanced opportunities for the community to contribute and make their views known to council are also planned by way of more frequent public forums. There are some specific issues that council needs to grapple with immediately. The first is the appointment of a new CEO and that needs to be worked through with as little transitional disruption as possible for staff as well as for elected members. Consolidation of the city's marketing efforts has been the subject of discussion and consultation for some time. That process should be brought to a conclusion for council's consideration in the very near future. A consistent and aligned marketing and promotional effort across all the city sectors cannot come too soon. In short, there is plenty of positive work to be done. And I note that it is the ambition of many people, elected and otherwise, to leave the world a better place than they found it. In addition, I would like this council to leave the prospects for our collective future better than we found them. That, I believe, is the primary responsibility of representatives entrusted with the wellbeing and civic health of their community. I welcome all the newly elected council to this term and to the enterprise, decision-making and effort that that will involve. I also look forward to a productive and collegial three years working together for the benefit and betterment of our Dunedin community. Here faivua iamato maki, may our work together be fruitful. Now we move on to the more formal, the more business of our agenda and I note that I'll introduce an item 5A which is a confirmation of the agenda, which is missing off the, off the agenda. There are no apologies, so I'll move on to the item 5A which I've just mentioned and I'll move from the chair that the agenda as, as printed, as circulated, be confirmed. Seconded councillor Staines, discussion councillor Van Ness.
I've looked through the non-public part of the agenda and not found anything in it specifically the report 14.1 to 14.3 that really justifies it staying in the non-public part of the agenda. The reason given for it being a non-public is that it's for the protection of the privacy of natural persons. The only natural person that's there is the consultant whose name is public anyway. So I would like to move that that part of the agenda be moved into public so that we could have a public discussion about it.
Well, insofar as I've already moved that the agenda be confirmed, what you're talking about is a consequential motion. However, what I suggest is that we discuss bringing it into public if we want, if councillors of a mind during the non-public part. I'm happy to leave this, my motion is confirmation of the public part of the agenda and when we reach the non-public part, I'm happy to open up the discussion in non-public for decisions to whether it is brought back into public immediately.
Okay, given that that decision is then delayed, I would like to introduce another part of the agenda because of urgency. And that is that I believe that especially with the seven new councillors that we have around the table, we need to discuss the possibility of extending the recruitment period for the chief executive. And I would like to introduce that to the agenda as a separate item.
Well, I will equally discuss that in non-public because it relates to the item that we've just talked about. So I'm happy to have that brought to the non-public part of the agenda and we can bring it back into non-public, into public if that is the will of council at that time.
But you're not prepared to consider publicly discussing the recruitment?
No, I'm not.
Just by yourself. Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the public part of the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
No, recorded please.
Item six is a declaration of interest which doesn't need a vote, but it just reminds councillors of the responsibilities with regard to contracts. Item seven, this is acknowledgement of service of retiring members and tributes to retiring councillors. The first is to councillor Paul Hudson. I note that councillor Hudson served 24 years on council and also served on the board of DCHL and had a strong interest in community development particularly. So I'm going to move from the chair that the council record its sincere thanks to Paul Hudson for the loyal and conscientious service given to the city of Dunedin as a member of the Dunedin City Council for 24 years during the period 1989 to 2013. The council extends sincere appreciation for the services rendered and every good wish for the future. Second, councillor Staines, does there anyone would like to speak to that? Councillor Newey.
Thank you, your worship. Just briefly, it goes back some time that I first met Paul in my first term in 1998 and I was lucky enough to serve under him as deputy chair of works infrastructure, better known as infrastructure services these days. But yeah, just really wanted to acknowledge Paul's time and energy that he's put into the city. The Hudson family have had a long affiliation with the city in a business sense and I think and I know his, his family will be very proud of his contribution right across this organisation. And you've already alluded to, your worship, his involvement with community development in DCHL and, and on a local level in his own community, the Port Chalmers and West Harbour area.
Councillor Z.
Yes, I'd like to just endorse what Andrew has said and speak in favour of the, wishing Paul all the best. Paul was instrumental in forming the council's companies initially, had a major role there. And as has been said, he chaired the Dunedin City Holdings and chairman of the Community Development Committee overseeing a number of community projects, some which didn't come to fruition. Logan Park, I know Paul was very disappointed for financial reasons. We pulled that back off the, off the council's books a year or so back, but that was one of the projects that he had in particular that he would like to have finished, but he did make a solid contribution to all of that. Also, the, the community, the, yes, the Community Development Committee. It wasn't widely known in the public that Paul suffered a very serious accident in the last 18 months or so of his term on council and he struggled in the last year or so quite bravely, I thought. So he would have been disappointed, of course, in that, but he has served the city very well over the years and I certainly wish him all the best in the future.
No further speakers, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, carried. The second acknowledgement of services for councillor Theresa Stevenson, who served on this council for 21 years. And Theresa had a strong concern for the less advantaged in the community and that was her focus throughout, that and job creation. So I shall move from the chair that the council recorded sincere thanks to Theresa Stevenson for the loyal and conscientious service given to the city of Dunedin as a member of the Dunedin City Council for 21 years during the period 1982 to 2013. The council extends sincere appreciation for the services rendered and every good wish for the future. Seconded councillor Wilson, would anyone like to speak? Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, your worship. I think Theresa, over 21 years, put in an enormous amount of effort and I still remember on my, my first week on council getting an email from her which outlined in detail, it was a detailed critique of, of a paper that was, that was coming in front of us and that attention to detail which Theresa brought to her term on council, I think is something that I will remember her from and remember her, her, her contribution for and, and certainly something that I have learned from. I think Theresa, everything that she did came from her heart as a councillor. She, she really put her heart and soul into her work and, and often gave us a real feeling for what she was passionate about when she spoke to, to the issues that came, came in front of us as a council. I think you've rightly acknowledged that she was a voice for those in our community who perhaps are less advantaged and she was very strong in that and I admire her contribution for that. So I have no doubt that she will find ways to continue to contribute to Dunedin. I know how passionate she is about the city and I certainly know that she has her intention to continue her involvement with our community in, in, in many different ways. So I wish her all the best with that.
Councillor Wilson.
I'd just like to acknowledge Theresa, I had the pleasure of her being a very supportive deputy in the last term as on PNE, but I think the one word that comes out when I think of Theresa is passion and she was, actually, those things that she was both passionate about, she would fight for for the nth degree, but she was passionate about Dunedin and its potential. And I think that the lesson that I take from her is, is to try to find a positive way to get to what you want. And she often did try to do that. We couldn't always necessarily see eye to eye on issues, but she was prepared and tenacious about her opinions and, and that I, I valued her contribution for.
Councillor Staines.
I remember Theresa because she was the first of the incumbent councillors who rang me after my success in my first triennium on council. And I couldn't quite understand what she was saying because she said, Chris, I'm ringing you to let you know that you shouldn't be seen talking to me. Because if you do, the other councillors mightn't talk to you. And I wondered what on earth have I got myself into? But I think Theresa was one of those people who had her agenda. There wouldn't be a community organisation in the city that she had not tried to help in some way or other. She was driven by that. She was driven by getting jobs for people with effectively low job skills, finding them work in the community. She certainly put all of her efforts into those things. And at times, I guess, perhaps frustrated her fellow councillors because she would not move from the position that she had trying to get what she believed was right. And I think the city owes quite a lot to Theresa during her 21 years on council. Certainly the social services sector and the community organisations do. So I wish her well in the future. I'm sure that she will find a place doing exactly those things in our city in the years to come.
Councillor Van Ness.
I don't want to keep you all any longer than necessary. People have already said nice things. There's just two things about Theresa I think should be added. One of them was that she had a real involvement with setting up the ID fashion show down at the railway station. The other one was that during the course of many arduous years here, she actually put herself through a planning degree. That's how passionate she was about trying to upskill herself. And to me, it's the kind of action that speaks louder than words. And I think, I just wanted to note that point. Thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
I, I don't want to repeat what other people have said, but I just wanted to make the observation that when Theresa first came on to council 21 years ago, it was, the makeup of council was quite different to what I perceive it as now. I don't believe that 21 years ago, council had the diversity of community representation on it that it does now. And I think for that reason, Theresa's, her political perspective and her sticking up for issues that she can, she felt strongly about, to me, was that much more courageous for that because I think there is a much greater diversity both of people and background and political persuasion that sits around this table now. And I think that's got a lot to do with different voting systems, but I'm not sure that it was quite like that 21 years ago. And I think it took considerable courage for her to hold to me the positions that she did and I certainly would want to congratulate her for that.
No further speakers, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item eight, as you see in your papers, in accordance with the Local Government Act 2002, the chief executive will give us some explanations. Before you do, if I may be indulge the meeting by taking this off because I'm going to expire emma.
Leave it on, I'd love to see it.
Briefly, councillors, clause 21 of schedule seven of the Local Government Act requires that at the first meeting of the council following the triennial election, a general explanation is given of key legislation concerning the council and elected members. The briefing before members does that. It covers the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, Local Authorities Member Interest Act of 1968, sections 99, 105 and 1058 of the Crimes Act 1961, Secret Commissions Act 1910 and the Securities Act 1978.
Right. I'll move on to item nine and this is the committee structure and membership. And I will, I have, as I've said, made the appointments under the powers bestowed on the, under the new legislation. And I'll move from the chair that the recommendations on the order paper be noted or be moved. Seconded councillor Wilson, any discussion? Councillor Cullen.
I understand fully the change in the legislation that allows for the mayor to make these appointments. I think that in this case, they don't necessarily totally reflect the views of the voters. I think that in this case, they don't necessarily totally reflect the views of the voters. And I feel slightly uncomfortable about what seems to me. And it's probably because I'm new here and don't fully understand the procedures of noting and moving and things. But I feel I'm being encouraged to in some way bless the decision that you have made. And I'm comfortable that you're in a position to make them. But I'm not feeling like it's part of my role to be involved with it. So I won't be voting for it.
Councillor Vanders.
In the event that this noting, which is essentially approval of all of the mayor's decisions on, or suggestions on the structure, the chairs, the deputy chairs and other appointments, in the event that the noting isn't moved, I would like to foreshadow another motion which I've already left with Pam. Should I read it at this point or just foreshadow that I have a slightly alternative motion suggesting?
I'm happy for you to read it if it's what you want to do.
My apologies, I've got the wrong page on my computer here and I've neglected to write it down. It's very short. Pam, could you possibly read it for me? I'll just try and find it. Pardon me.
There it is, it's on the screen.
Thank you. No, I've got it here, my apologies. I hereby wish to propose the following motions on item nine for today's agenda. One, that council, one, notes that the appointment, notes the appointment of councillor Hillary Calvert as the deputy mayor. And two, notes the new committee structure as appended to this report and the chairs, deputy chairs and various councillors' appointments to those committees, subcommittees and boards with a change of deputy mayor from councillor Staines to councillor Calvert. And the change of Chair of Infrastructure from councillor Wilson to councillor Vanders. Thank you.
Is that a motion that I can speak to now? No. Just foreshadowed. Thank you. So is there any further discussion? Councillor Thompson.
Well, it's, it's just clear in foreshadowing the motion, given that it is councillor Vanders wishing to appoint himself to a position that he presumably approves of that. But it's not clear to me whether it is councillor Calvert's wish that she be in that motion. I have no idea. So I just wonder.
Well, in the event that the motion that's on the table fails, we can have that discussion then. So are there any further speakers to the motion that I have put that the, my appointment's been noted? All right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Okay, we've got councillor Vanders. Against? Do you wish your vote against to be recorded, councillor Calvert? Stayed?
It's not necessary.
No, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, now, the committee, the committee structure. I need to enunciate the changes, don't I? Well, I'm advising that the membership of two committees was not settled until this morning and hence it wasn't on the order paper. And one of them is the Grants Committee. And the chair will be, and I think, I thank you Pam, it's up there. Chair will be councillor Tavish. Members councillor Hawkins, Wiley, councillors Hawkins, Wiley and Wilson. And the other one was TUI2, where the members, the representatives from the council are councillors Bezet, Wilson and Hawkins. That's for your advice. Okay, item 10, appointments to outside organisations. I'm going to move those. Sorry. I'm moving the recommendation on page 10.1, that the appointments to outside organisations. Oh, I see. Move that. Okay, sorry. As you were, Karen's advised me that I need to move the new, the newly advised ones so, that I've just outlined. So I'll move it. Second, councillor Staines. Is there any discussion on those? This is the Grants Committee and TUI2. There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item 10, appointments to outside organisations. You know, I've got ahead of myself, but as I say, I'll move from the chair that the appointments, the recommendation on page 10.1, that the appointments to outside organisations as appended to the report be approved. Second, councillor Staines. Any discussion? Being none, I'll put that. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item 11, the meeting schedule. I will move the motions at the bottom of the page in the agenda. One, two and three. Second, councillor Staines. Is there any discussion on that? Councillor Noon.
Your worship, I assume the note at the bottom when it talks about the meeting schedule for 2014 prepared for the council meetings in the future, I assume that the community boards, as per normal, get their same opportunity. And the only reason I raise it is that some boards meet at different times in the afternoon and sometimes changes occur following triennium. So as long as they're getting that opportunity to discuss their meeting schedule at a later date, I'm quite relaxed.
It's okay, that's confirmed in part three of the, of the motion. I'll take it. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Item 12, production of standing orders. Now, I note, I'll move it from the chair that the, the motion that's on the order paper. Second, councillor Staines. I note that it is intended that standing orders will be reviewed. We, we cannot proceed without some form of standing orders, but the intention of council is to review these early in the triennium, starting with the code of conduct. And that will be done as a matter of priority. But as a, as a default, we will, I'm moving that we adopt the standing orders as they are currently. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councillor Wilson.
Just as a matter of priority, I'd also love to see the use of cellular devices or computers being amended because I know that I've used mine today and I apologise for the breach already, but I was using it as a camera. And I just think it's one that people want to be told this meeting's on and what time to come to an item. We should be amending that for everyone's benefit.
Yep. And noted. All right, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item 13 is appointments to the bylaw review hearing subcommittees, of which there are two. One for mobile trading bylaws review and the other for skateboarding bylaw review. The councillors appointed to those need to be confirmed. So I'll move from the chair that those appointments be made. Second, councillor Staines. Is there any discussion on that? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item 14, Resource Management Act Training. This is simply to give approval to two councillors, councillor Hawkins and councillor Wiley, to undertake Resource Management Act training organised by the Ministry for the Environment. Second, councillor Staines. Discussion? Put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Well, that's the, come to the end of the agenda for the public part of the meeting. And I'll move from the chair as per the order paper that the public be excluded from the following parts of proceedings of this meeting. And only item 15 for the reasons stated below. Second, councillor Staines. I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried.
No recorded please.